Next to Poplin Island between UCB because that's a perfect location to move the hut to. We want it to be open to the public. This is an effort that's going to be owned by and for the people and for the people that live in Graham County and the town of Robbinsville. Our goal is to keep the building open to the public and do this with all volunteer labor. And so Scott's here, he's going to be in charge of moving the building. We've got Pastor Eric Reese, is he still here? Maybe not. He didn't have a field meeting? Okay, well, Scott will talk to you about the project. And anyone who wants information about the historic value of the hut, I'll put a pile of these papers out here or I'll hand them to you both, Scott.
This whole thing came together in two different directions, really. You know, people are talking about, gosh, we've got to save the hut, it's a historic building. And then two minutes later, there's a discussion going on about, gosh, we need to engage the people in their own community. We need some kind of a big project that we do with volunteers instead of just saying, well, let's give grant money. And then things happen around the people and send through to people, which, you know, this place for grant projects, but we need something in this county to connect the people, you know, so that the people have volume in their community, you know, through their sweat, their tears and efforts. And the fact that those two conversations took place within minutes of each other, it's like, well, let's move the hut. Use enough volunteer labor, no tax dollars, just the people digging in and doing. And that conversation was about two weeks ago. And in two weeks, you've got pretty much all the pieces in place to make it happen. So I think the community is ready for a big project or something, you know. And I hope this is going to play out that way where we get, you know, the community pride, how the love of the people, by the people, for the people, doing something. And that's just the vision we've got and it seems like it's coming together. So anybody who's got any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
And thanks to county commissioners because they're all supporting this project. And apparently this property is now assigned over to Graham County Travel and Tourism, but county is the chair there now, Donnie Orr. And so she says, no problem, we can make it happen, I think. And so thanks to them, we can, we're a step closer to being able to relocate the building. We've got the expertise. We need a bunch of volunteers, so if you all want to sign up, feel free. And so, yeah, we thank you. And oh, the historic, Pastor Eric, anyhow, the building, from my knowledge, was the last log cabin built by the CCC in the whole United States. And it is, and it is subject to be approved as a historic building in the National Department. So Pastor Eric was checking into that and that's what we're hoping to have happen. And so we just thank everybody. Thank you all.
Thank you. Brown Brown with the US Forest.
Well, thank you for letting me come and share with you for just a moment. I'm now the newly appointed district ranger here on the Chiole Ranger District and also the Tuskegee Ranger District. So I cover two offices out of Murphy and Robbinsville. So all the national forest land that lies in Clay, Cherokee and Graham County. And I just wanted to have the opportunity to come by and introduce myself to the four commissioners and the people in attendance. Thank you for the opportunity. Just, I'll just give you just a brief history of me. I'm local somewhat. I'm from Macon County, born and raised in Macon County, which that's not normal for a district ranger to come in and be that local. So I'm very blessed and fortunate to be able to be this close to home on this new opportunity. For me, it's a really cool fact, I had to call my mom to make sure on this today, but Joanne Ball, Joanne is my great, great, great grandmother. So a lot of family history here in this area for me, as well as for those of you that don't know, Albert Mountain, which is in Macon County, was Joanne's husband. So those are my great, great, great grandparents. So I think that's pretty cool to be able to serve the people in a place where I have that much history. But anyway, you all know the importance of national forest land in Graham County, not certainly. It's not, it's not lost on me. Graham County, if you don't know, by percentage wise, has more, has a higher percentage of national forest land than any other county in the state of North Carolina. And that's a pretty big deal. Macon County, which is your next door neighbor, has the most acreage of national forest land, but not percentage wise, it's Graham County. So we're blessed here in western North Carolina to have as much national forest and public lands as we do, and especially so here in Graham County. So just a few things I think you might find interesting that we have going on. The San Tila Road, which is, I know is a pretty well-traveled road here in the county, a national forest system road. It's had some issues over the past summer and the rainy season, I guess you could call it. Certainly, we, there are plans and there's going to be opportunity to do a lot of work on that road. So we're excited about that, excited to be able to improve that travel route for, for the peak year of Graham County. There's some roads off of that that suffered some really serious damage, like bridge damage and things like that. They'll probably be closed for a while. If you're familiar with the Wicks Road, that's one of them. But those plans are certainly in the works to be able to fix that and open that opportunity back up for, for everyone. We will be doing, it's coming into spring, so that's spring fire season, and we will be doing some control burn here in the county. I don't know exactly, that's a bit weather dependent, so we don't have much control over that. So we'll see how much opportunity we get to do that, but that certainly will be coming up here in the next two months. So if you see smoke in the air, hopefully that's what it is, not a wildfire. Just as I had an opportunity to describe burns. A lot of recreation type stuff has went on over the past year. We're able to, through some grant money, we're able to do a lot of work to the Joyce Kilmer Trail System. Actually, we went and put that whole entire trail system and reworked it. So it's, it's in really good shape right now. And this coming year, we're getting the money to be able to do, not this coming, but this year, getting the money to be able to build some improvements to the bathroom and the parking area there at Joyce Kilmer. I know that's a big attraction here in the county and rightfully so, what an awesome place that is there at Joyce Kilmer. Doing some work at Cable Cove Campground, of course, just our normal maintenance all over at all of our, at all of our recreation sites. Able to put up information boards down on the Chiole River. So just a lot of, a lot of really good things going on. There's, there is what we're calling our crossover project, and that's just because it lies on the Graham and Cherokee County line, but we're, but we're planning and working through the process of a project called crossover, and that will allow us to do a lot of vegetation management, maybe some logging and prescribed burning, road improvement, all those types of things. So, but a lot going on, but once again, I'll sit down just.
Can you possibly have a start date on the bathroom at Joyce Kilmer or and/or also Cable Cove?
Sure.
Any start date on the key for renovation for those sites?
Cable Cove will be some decommission to some of the older sites that were along the creek there that we didn't need and to, and to some of the bathrooms that just were in poor condition. That's where we're at with Cable Cove at this point, and that should start pretty quick. We're waiting to hear back from the Department of, Department of Fire and Water Quality to get a permit from them to finish some of that work. But that's, I'm hopeful in the next month that that will start. As far as the, the work on the bathroom at Joyce Kilmer, I do not have a date on that yet, but I'm, our fiscal year runs from October to, October 1st to September 30th. So it should be before September 30th that that will at least be awarded and hopefully that that work will.
But it is on the radar.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions?
Yeah, any questions? It's nice to meet you. Appreciate you having me on.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I just want to give you a little update on what's going on with the renovation. Forty-four wooden shed out there, I couldn't, I almost couldn't look at it. It's getting dangerous on these five.
Yeah, it's going out.
I ain't put nobody in. We've got cardboard piled up with key bays. I just, I'm gonna put in recycling, but I don't want nobody hurt in there. I have got four of them tomorrow, I'm looking, we're gonna be taking some of the other stuff down. So we're gonna have to get in and get the cardboard, we've got two loads of cardboard in there to get it out. But we did probably start working on, that's the work on plan, get this building built. We did probably start trying to get that tore down as soon as possible. But it's staying. There's nowhere to work after we're done with the cardboard, recycling.
Yeah, we gotta come up with a plan action on that.
It's dangerous, but that's what they always, that's what we said, it's gonna be.
Oh, of course, the size of those timbers that are just dangling. Isn't that a four to four?
Eight by eight.
Eight by eight. And they're just dangling.
There's the hanging on.
Yeah.
And I don't want to give you some guys on page to give anybody a hint of the size. Might put the vice on, I think so. My Creek, My Creek side, I'm gonna just fix what the fences are, we're looking at seven thousand three hundred ninety-seven thirty-five. If it was one man to put the gate up, we're looking at eleven thousand five hundred forty-nine And Gladys Creek side, that's ten bucks, six thousand three hundred thirty-five twenty-eight. And up at My Creek, if we can man that side up to twenty-eight, this is what, this is what we save so far, twenty-eight and a half. It's about four and a half ton a day of revenue. And our revenue, we're talking, going in there as far as C and D, a little bit from Twine County and Biggie's, nothing, just C and D, there was a lot of them were not. That comes up to around three hundred sixty dollars a day if it comes across the scale. And for the year, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If it didn't rank, if they're burning whatever, it didn't rank, and you're still saving sixty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, I'd probably bother them to get rid of it and have it on site. When they go over and open in the morning, there's nine cans empty, got fourteen, you can get the proper flow ready for a legal event. So I feel like My Creek would pay for the sale of what businesses and how the county stuff, you know, except Macon County out in Ohio and Cherokee County. And then we'll put them back if they go over the face, but Graham County's open for business, we're going back to My Creek. Something that you consider.
Yeah.
That's just giving us an idea, we'll give you some data, that's, that's going to My Creek, never liked it twenty-eight, and one of the butts was with it.
That's all we've got.
Thank you, Gavin. And I know you answered. I'll talk to you. So Tom, and you mentioned any question that I have asked you. But I did, and I did have an opportunity to talk to the previous manager, Pat Reese Simon, and I know he's a friend of yours, friends of mine about in this county, Donnie Orr, and he's not here tonight, but he had some, I felt like, good ideas that would mesh with some of the ideas that you're talking about. And hopefully in the future, we'll, we'll be able to get Donnie in to, to share his ideas and join us in the discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Gavin, I just wanted to say thank you for what you're doing at My Creek, sorry to screw you because I've had only one person that complained, and that was, the fact was, he showed up at nine o'clock to dump his trash and there was nobody there, which I told him, you know, they had to go home.
Right. I've had to go over today, I'm going to put, Kevin, on what we're doing at My Creek.
But everybody is.
A lot of people's habits.
They've, they've adjusted to the time. They, they just, they enjoy it because when they go, especially the night, there's a lot there, there's somebody there, and especially the older women, they feel more comfortable by it. And the fellas that's working at My Creek is very helpful to them, and they just said, you know, they're just unreal how clean it is, it looks so much better than what it is. And they just said, they just wanted to just, to just say thank you for, for taking care of it.
And if you get a chance, try to find a mayor and you'll certainly notice the difference.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Thank you, Gavin.
All right, good evening, everybody. Going to go through, I put on your table there, the project manager's report, go over a few things, talk about stuff we've got underway and plans, and maybe talk a little bit about the strap. Item number one, obviously there's no real change to add, adjust this there. Working with the commissioners on finalizing that site location. Do want to have an issue, at least let you know the concern with the architect engineer, we're probably ought to be talking to them here pretty quick. So no real change on item number one. Item two, I don't know if you had a chance to look at some of the photographs and the engineers' report from what we did out in Little Snowbird, it really looked good. Had some really good comments from the strap organization, the state that thought everything really turned out well. So that project's closed out, the final invoice, we're finalizing, working with our engineer to finalize the report and fill out all of NCRS documents, NCRS used documents to get to them, hopefully this week. Which leads me to the other item under strap. We're also working with our same engineer, GBI, to apply for more strap money. Obviously being out in Little Snowbird, we see the need. We did about a two mile section out there, it really turned out well, well needed to protect a lot of things out on the creek. So we have that on the list, but I'd ask the commissioners or anybody really in the room, if you've got any other areas that you'd like for us to put on that grant. I think I've, I think I've got to have it in by next Wednesday on the 28th. I'd like to know if you'd let me know a creek or a stream you want us to put on. Right now, we're going to put Little Snowbird, as we know, working up Little Snowbird, there's still some areas a little below where we already worked that need some work on it. So please let me know if you have any other area you want, we'll add to that.
And what are the primary things, like one, two, three, the top things that you looked for that, that you'd want reported?
Mostly it's the buildup of the creek debris, and it has to really be almost like what we had to do with Snowbird, a storm related, and obviously we don't know exactly what's storm related, but you can tell when there's a lot of debris and washed up against the bridges and abutments, that that's something we need to look at, and it'd be worth trying to at least go after some more money to, to get the help that we need out on Snowbird. So definitely did a good job out there. So just let me know, if I can hear from anybody, we'll put in Little Snowbird for next week. All right, moving on. Senior Center, as you know, we're trying to expand our kitchen up there. Senior Center does a lot of good things for the county here. And we bid the project, unfortunately, we bid on February the 8th, we didn't receive bids. So we readvertised, we're going to bid the 22nd this week. We will be able to open up what we get. Hopefully we'll get at least one, we won three, obviously, we need competition, and we want to be sure we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So we'll, we'll try to get us some bids this week and open those and we go from there. Hopefully get an award at the end of this month or early March. We want to be done with that. Completion, we're estimating July, depends on obviously how far we can get with the bid process once we get through that. So excited to get that one going and get that one complete. Some good news, obviously moving down the sheet, item four, the CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Money, 708 Mountain Creek, we, that project has started, we demoed that, got rid of all the material. The homeowner has moved there, obviously, before we demoed, moved all their personal belongings to storage units out on site, and we, the matto boards are out, laid out, we're going to hopefully be digging footers here this week, and excited to get this Millsaps house here, here pretty soon, hopefully by the summer months, we'll be done with that project. The other one that we're doing right off, same time is 297 Cotton Tail Branch. That one, we're working on getting the bonding company. There's just a couple of documents that we've worked through, but we'd love to move our, our demolition crew and slash foundation crew from one house to the other and just keep those going, just one right out together, framing crew move over while the other ones are doing roofing or whatever the case may be on the CDVG. So we're going to build two houses simultaneously at the end of the day. So that's the, that's the goal for both those houses.
Jesse, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure, sure.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we are having trouble, this family is going to need to be taken, they do not have family members that they often be able to stay with. And so as part of the grant relocation is included in that grant. And I'm having trouble finding temporary relocation for them. It's about six months, and because we're going into like travel and tourism season, a lot of people are not wanting to do like a long-term rental because they would make more money with the night with the grants. So if you know of anybody that has a two-bedroom rental available, let me know, name, phone number, I'd love to call them, just pick their grant, see if they would be willing to, to help us out in this situation.
Are you contacted real first?
I've been contacted.
Sure.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, that's a great point. We'll continue to work on those, a couple of things we have to work out to try to get that one going, but we'll, we'll work on it and find a way forward. Item six is the Grace Place Kitchen. She else here, I met with her on site the other day, and really, really a nice facility they have going on. It's going to be something great they're doing out there, so a wonderful project. I don't know if you're, you're going to talk about it, but it's certainly nice to get a chance to go over and see it. Some Goodwill Spence CDG money there as well, too. The item seven is the project that we entered in with the school for the new stadium. We met on site and did our kickoff meeting at the end of last month, January 31st. The engineers felt like at that time, and Chairman Mills, we talked a little bit about it in the office one day, that with the scope of the work and a lot of the things that we're going to have to meet with ADA and walking distances and all this, they felt like maybe we needed to look at getting prices for rentals to get us through. First of all, the first phase would be in May, this coming May for graduation, and then also for the next, for the 2024 football season. So we did bid out, we're trying to get bids right now for rentals, just to see what's going to cost us to not, to not, we put a set of, have a set of leechers in by May for graduation, what that cost would be, two and a half months from May to the end of July, and then by August 1st, four and a half months, August to December for football season, so we can continue to have football here. And then also included in the, in the bid of the contract is to give us an idea of what a one-year option, just in case. So we have that on the, on the books to be able to, if we're not able to get the project in, certainly want to be prepared. But the intent would be, as we discussed before, if we have to rent this year, rent this year, and then be ready to go by December, say December the 10th or so after the other, these rentals move out with the new start of construction for the new phase, and that gives us from December of this year to August of next year for football season. So that's actually items seven and eight. I went over the rental, the bids a little bit for the, for the item eight for the rental seating that was due today. We received one bid. So what we'll do is by statute and good stewards of tax dollars, we'll readvertise, but probably seven day ahead of time, we'll hold on to, we'll make sure the contractor or the vendor wants us to hold on to their bid, we'll hold on to a sealed bid. We'll bid it again. If we don't get anything on the second go-round, we'll be able to open that bid up and we'll share it with the county commissioners. The intent was to try to have them here today so I could at least have, that was the reason why I picked the state, so I could have some commissioners at least prices to be looked at, and then obviously school, the 300% of their board as well. We'll, we'll probably get this next go-round, it will be by the, by their board meeting, and we'll figure out how to get, obviously, all that information, all five of the commissioners here, work with Ms. Kim to get you that information if we get bids this next go-round, so. As Gavin talked, the rest of the projects, nine, 10, 11, are obviously these are capital outlet projects that I provided the numbers for, so that we could probably try to budget for these needs as we go forward. And as Gavin said, I provided the capital outlet for that new engineered building. What we did was we worked on, working with Gavin closely, we worked on a transfer station master plan, and we've got, a little bit of plant work that we did with that, actually minimal cost, so I could maybe meet with the commissioners at some point, come to my office or whatever we need to do to kind of look at how we want to go forward, trying to get that building replaced. At one time, we did talk with the Coates about they would, they would go in with us to help do the demo of the old building, and then what we have in plan right now is to try to do a three-sided metal building, kind of like the metal buildings that we did for our other project. So just so the commissioners know, we have a little bit of money that we can budget for maybe in the new year, the budget year, or however, whatever you guys choose to go for, we'll, we'll make it work. There aren't any questions on the project report? I did, also did, I wanted to provide the commissioners with, under my report, you should have a cost project analysis of our capital projects that we did when I came aboard. I feel like there's some good things here. Keep in mind, this was all through the craziness of COVID. And as we know, we moved the Graham County Board of Elections, if you've been into building up there, and really, there's nothing wrong with a building, but obviously buildings, they age, and there becomes problems with those facilities, and we needed to get them out of that building. If we would have contracted it at that, that time, as you can see commissioners, the contract cost for us to build that, to remodel a building, not the size there, but what we have, where we put it next door, would have been three hundred one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. We were able to bring that cost in at two hundred ninety thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. That's savings of about ten thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars from what it would have cost for contracting by rebuilding it next year, next door here. I hope everybody's had a chance to go into that, it really turned out to be really nice facilities compared to where they were. That's a cost savings in the taxpayer of about three and a half percent. So it was only about three change orders, and it's important to note, I'll read over these change orders a little bit, but these were basically, wasn't anything that was a problem with the contract, it was something that we saw at the end of the project that we thought was a need for the project to complete, and also we were already, we were, well, I've been a budget anyway, so that's, I'm just, it's important when you do the management of a contract that you as the commissioners that are, you know, spending the tax dollars, that you know where we went with the, with the money and the change orders that came with the project. The next one, item two, would be the cemetery building, as you know, up on West Fort Hill. If we would have contracted that out, contract cost would have been two hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars. We brought that building in at two hundred and seven thousand two eighty-one sixteen, saving about forty, or seventy-four thousand dollars. That's a 26% saving cost on what it would have been in contract, contract price. We only had two change orders for that project. As you know, we won't, we won't say if you did, somebody maybe almost ran off into a little bit of a culvert on the side of the building, so we had to put a new drainage, that was one of the drainage container, that was one of the ones that, that was a change order, so we were glad to do that and really make a difference up there. We won't talk about it.
I almost got famous. Just that close.
Very close, you almost did. So we got it fixed and it, and it looked good, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Then the last project would have been the new recreation department. Again, recreation department, remember, was in the old Phyllis Jordan Building, or actually the old county manager's office up behind the courthouse. And the problem was, it was a travel, three flights of stairs to get to their equipment store in the bottom of the building and have to drive around. We built a new building up there on P and J Road. If we would have contracted that cost out, it would have been three hundred forty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars. We brought the cost in at two hundred sixty-eight thousand five eighty-one and ten cents, saving right at eighty thousand. That's saving right at $80,000. About 23% cost savings by doing that project up there. And I also thought it was good to note, if you look at our lower notes there, right now, from a year looking at year utilities on the cemetery building, it costs about $114 a month to operate that building. And it's got, it's got nice, you know, it's conditioned building, well insulated. And that's just a cost of about $1,200 to the taxpayer here for a cemetery crew to be able to operate out of that building. So not bad. And then right behind it, the recreation building, costs about $242 a month to operate that, or about $2,700 a year to operate that building, which is a cost savings too, also from the facility that they were once in. I'm sure if you get up and tell you that certainly being able to have a facility that have, be able to put out there, all the materials that they need to separate it out and to be able to go in and check their inventory is pretty incredible. So appreciate the commissioners for being willing to do that. And I feel like it was money, taxpayer money that was well spent for the needs of the county. And if there is no questions for me, that's all. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. I'll pass out the report for you. We'll start on page one. This is the unrestricted cash balance that is in the two general funds that we have housed at United Community Bank and also North Carolina Capital Management Trust. For the period ending January 31st, our balance was $8,636,742.86. You can see the variances that are listed for the previous years across that same road. Move on down to the box below it. Our capital projects account that's housed at North Carolina Capital Management Trust, the balance as of 1/31 is $3,362,137.5. But you can see the variance from the prior year right beside it. The next one is the school capital project, again housed at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. Our balance is $122,345.4. Again, the variance posted right beside it. The American Rescue Plan Act that's housed at United Community Bank, I do need to just bring to your attention again that the expenditure deadline for those funds is the 31st of this calendar year. So we'll need to have some meetings about our plans forward with the remaining balance that we have there. And to date, that remaining balance is $649,482.82. Moving down to the SCIF grant, which is for the courthouse, that's again housed at North Carolina Capital Management Trust. Our balance as of 1/31 was $4,950,519.38. If you look over to the far right of the page, it's got the earnings, which is that interest on all of those accounts. For this month, the earnings were $47,115.90. And that brings our year-to-date total to $341,857.76. We move over to page two, the highlighted area. This has got our current tax collections. This comes from our real officer for this provided by our tax collector's office. The current year collections was $1,471,260.1. Prior years that they've collected on was $10,337.39. For a total collected, $1,481,597.40. Our DMV taxes that were collected were $49,955.47. If you move on to page three, down at the bottom, it's got the year-to-date. So this is year-to-date for our sales tax collections, or for tax collections, not sales tax, I apologize. For our tax collections, year-to-date is $8,547,220.33. And our total to date for the DMV is $386,73.65. And then below, you've got your previous year-to-date variances that you can look at. Our collection rate is 91.54 is our current collection rate. So the total levy, our collections monthly total is $7374,484.87. If you move on to page four, document page is highlighted. This is our revenues and expenditures for the period ending January 31st. I did want to bring to your attention that I have updated the revenues and the expenditures for each of the months going back to July. And that's just based on posting. We're getting caught up on a lot of the postings that we've been backed up on. So just posting those revenues and then posting any other expenditures by journal entries that have to be made. So those have been updated and I do have the reports if you would like to see them. But those numbers are updated. So the revenues for January 31st was $2,128,830.91. Our expenditures were $2,076,760.34. So we ended with a surplus of $2,070.57. And again, those numbers may continue to fluctuate as we still work through some of the postings that we've done.
Did you say you thought?
$2,070.57. It's highlighted in green on page four. I'm so sorry, I can't see. I missed an eye doctor appointment this morning. I'm so sorry. I forgot I had an eye doctor appointment and I missed it. And obviously, I'm a two-month-old. So the surplus, I apologize. I was looking at that like it was a dollar sign. Thank you for correcting me on that.
We're glad to see that.
And then on page five, you can see our revenue to date is $14,184,432.1. Our expenditures to date is $13,597,901.67. So our year-to-date, or actually no surplus, $586,530.34. And just to keep you up to date, I think I might start including it in the financial report. It's just a grants update on where we are. But I just wanted to let you know that the Volkswagen, the Volkswagen grant with the Department of Environmental Quality, and we have been working to recuperate that money for quite some time. And there's been a lot of hoops that we've had to jump through as far as showing destruction of the old vehicles and proof that the new vehicles are in working and that type of thing. So we think that we've satisfied all of their requirements. Gavin and I have worked hard on that. And we should be looking for those months to be recuperated this month. And then the NRCS project, Little Snowbird project that we, Jason talked about previously, we are waiting on the engineer to help us. There were three different snowbird grants. And so we're having to make sure, it's based on winter feed. And so we're having to have the engineer make sure that the invoicing is specific to each grant. And so we're down to where we can do our final billing. So that will recuperate quite a bit of funds as well. CDBG is pretty on top of things as far as the requisition. Our money comes in every month and they pay us by the next month. So those are turning around quickly. But those are the ones that are outstanding, the larger classes. Moving on to page six, this is our sales tax collection. This is for the period ending January 31st. We were distributing the funds that were collected from the month of November. So it's actually two months recorded behind. But the amount that we received was $279,498.15, which brings our year-to-date total to $1,718,364.96. If you look at the 524 expansion and the schools portion of that, it's all still growing and we're still on a growth of 5.44% for those. And the schools are continuing to get 125% of that expansion revenue. The quarter cent sales tax that we've been collecting since inception, we've actually set aside $1,227,949.5. And we are actually moving that money over to our SCIF grant to help supplement those funds. So there's just an update on that as well. And then if you go to the final page, page seven, this is our analysis of past due taxes. This has to do with when we started enforcing foreclosures. So as far as the period, I apologize, my eyesight is really bad. For the period of 2005 through 2014, past due taxes have been collected on at $82,773.62. There still is a total of $439,102.38 that need to be collected. For the period of 2015 through 2023, we have collected $1,313,638.21. And there is still a balance of $1,763,117.86 to be collecting. Are there any questions that you might have in regards to the report? I did want to update you. I've been having weekly meetings with Becky Garland, who is our representative, our team coach from LGC, the local government commission. We've been meeting weekly and she has been helping me with the audit. And we also have been having weekly check-ins with our auditor and from our accounting. And so just wanted to let you guys know that we are moving forward. We're having to bite off pieces at a time. We are moving forward. And Becky has set us the goal to have it completed by March of 15th and have everything turned into the auditors by that time. LGC's approved that as well as the auditors. So that is, and then I'm also having weekly coaching meetings with the NCACC. They have representatives that have come down and met with us. Jeff Gordon was very helpful in bringing them, introducing them to us. And now we'll be doing weekly check-ins with them and they will be helping us just within our finance department to identify things that we might can streamline, if there's things that we can, if we can divvy up the workforce a little bit differently just to make it, to make it more fluid. Those are things that we've been working on. And ADP has, the conversion has been successful. We've gotten mostly positive feedback. There's been a few little, a few little things, you know, as we adjust and people are having to update their forms, their federal tax forms and their state tax forms and those type of things. So there's been a few little little bumps, but overall, it's gone really well. And I think overall that we've got a lot of positive feedback coming. And it also will relieve the work on the payroll specialist, Lani. She was spending four days having to key the manual time cards in. And so this is actually a time saver for her, which allows me to train her to take over some other duties.
Any questions? Any public comment? You can start. I think most of you. We'll get on the herd.
I did have one other public comment.
Go ahead.
And that was just a big thank you.
You're welcome. So John, Scott, Eric, Katie, Betty. John Herrmann, still here? Jack A. Herrmann, still here? All right. Discussion items. Park of money.
Let me work on that and I'll give you some possible dates that you can make on that. That's easy to forward.
And approve the polls on 12-2 for the ambulance, $250,758.21 or the deposit of $78,500. Poll on 2-9 for the back cages at $5,405.8. And the poll on 2-15 to approve budget number 15, look funds inside the health department budget.
Is there a motion to approve these polls?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? On paper. Got the leases and the scoundrels. Releases are $1,701.74 and scoundrels are $10,555.20. Is there a motion to approve those releases and scoundrels? On paper. On paper. Matthew Smith to remove Matthew. So I'll remove Matthew from the firefighter relief fund board. Motion to remove him. Is there a second? On paper. And motion to point, bring the post down to the firefighter relief fund board.
Second.
On paper. And we will continue this meeting, made with NCDOR. One Johnson Satterfield to the force board board. Is there a second?
Second.
On paper. Sanitation items for tipping, seven misses for last year.
Yeah, well, no, it's for several years. We're trying to clean books and we had come up with an amount and I had sent out some other things, some of them had previously paid. So we're just trying to clean that. That was the amount that we lacked, that I don't know who they are. I don't know where to mail them to. Some are deceased and some, there was a couple of them that y'all had excused, like Samuel Farley. And I can legally take it off, against having to take it off because it's.
So we've got $2,529.8 and sanitation tipping figure items.
Yes.
Motion to write off.
Is there a second?
$29.8.
And a motion is your second.
Thank you.
We've got a Ford 350, 2017 surplus.
That's coming from transit and the price range goes from the bottom. It's 12,463 up to 13,389. I just need permission to surplus and you to give me a total. Where do you want the surplus to start? Or be in a moment.
We'll set a reserve on that.
Are these blue list numbers?
I believe that it's traffic drivers that operate southern.
That's what she took. That's the two numbers that she gave in that range.
I don't think they ever get that up. I'm surprised.
You want me to take it back to Ms. 180?
They can try, but I don't, I don't find nobody there that makes sure.
What do you think?
I don't know.
So just let me do this.
I can guess I'm going to leave them to develop my moral code.
Try.
We'll do it. Do we want to set a lower reserve there? Can I buy? Try 10 times?
Try.
Seven quarters.
It's the A350. And I mean, Keith, you started sitting, he kind of knows. So it needs to be lower. I just need to know, give me my information to surplus.
What are your thoughts of getting lower number key? Or should we just accept the bids as they come in and see what we get? We have the option to decline, I believe, don't we, Jay?
We're now, what is in platform leaving this conversation? She just walked in.
What's the conversation?
Your A350, 2017 bus.
I think the Kelly Blue Book price is too high for the value of the vehicle. We've kept top of our run, it's been one of the most today for the last few months. And it was a light getting the vehicle sold. I know that the price that we pulled from the Kelly Blue Books for the condition is too high. Now, you look at a residential transaction. I'd put $5,000 on this thing. Yeah, I think that's fine and it'll go up a little bit maybe. But I don't want us to sell it to anybody and then not realize that it does have some issues. It wouldn't still be in as good a shape that in, we had kept it maintained like we did. It's required by the feds and the state. But that is too high.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to make a motion to surplus to the vehicle at a minimum bid of five thousand or more? Is there a motion? Is there a second? Call the favor. Is there any new orders?
I actually have a couple more items that I have to include. I was giving my report. And we do have an invoice that we need to pay for our professional services for our attorney. And this is over my approval limit, so I needed to enter. This is for the billing period of, it's actually last calendar year. So it's January of twenty-twenty-three to December of twenty-twenty-three. And the total is thirty-four thousand, thirty-five dollars. I just before permission to be able to approve this requisition.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve is your second.
Second.
Call the favor.
And I also have several budget amendments. The, Kim had actually told you on amendment fifteen. So I'm gonna skip that one, but I have some that refer to that and one more is after that. So amendment thirteen was moving some money for the Health Department. Again, it was outside of the other funds. And this is moving money from the fighter salary and down to the adult health medical and for their supplies. And it was just moving forty thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that is amendment number thirteen?
Amendment number thirteen. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve budget amendment thirteen? Motion. Is there a second? Call the favor.
That's amendment thirteen. And then I have amendment number fourteen. And amendment fourteen is, this is for the partner social services. And we actually received some, what they're calling LEAP money in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And then we also received some emergency placement money in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. And so that actually brought in new revenue of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. And so they need, they needed me to distribute that amongst their expenditure line items, which I did. And they also, they were wanting to distribute that into the energy supplement in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. And then they needed to make a transfer from their auto repair supplies into their fuel in the amount of five thousand dollars. They were just running low in that account. And then the energy placement funds went in for eleven thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Is this new, is this, is this more than that money that we?
This is new money that we did not budget for. So this is a budget.
So I gave us more than that.
They gave us an additional thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars.
And that was at twenty-one thousand, five hundred, five thousand and then eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty for the total.
That's correct.
And that is amendment number fourteen?
That is correct.
Is there a motion to approve amendment fourteen?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the favor.
Okay. And then we already approved fifteen by poll. Number sixteen, this is a discovery that was made, actually yesterday. And we were looking, Ms. Buchanan from the sheriff's office was looking to spend some of their North Carolina and drug funds money. And it was discovered that it wasn't properly budgeted to start with their balance. At the end of the fiscal year twenty-three, or twenty-two, twenty-three, was actually forty-one thousand, thirty dollars in their account. So that should have been considered their revenue. And then their expenditure line item should have matched that. And what happened was their revenue account was shorted seventeen thousand, thirty dollars. So I'm going to increase the budget by that amount to incorporate that amount that was in there. And then we can put that into their expenditures line item. But the problem was there was a twenty-four thousand dollar balance that was not put into their expenditures. So after discussing it with the manager and we discussed that court's contingency would be a good place to take that from and within our budget so that we can get those accounts tidied up. So it's going back to what their, what their balance was at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
And then that will correct all of it.
Yes, ma'am. And then going forward, those funds will, are restricted and they should always be based on the six-thirty state plan moving into the next year. And expenditures should match that.
That's number sixteen.
This is budget number sixteen.
I like question to approve amendment number sixteen. Is there a second?
Call the favor.
We do still need to discuss, it was brought to my attention by Melissa and one of the people, that they, that the seniors center, they're generating revenue when they're preparing the meals and for the jail. And they are stating that it was, it was discussed at some point in time that the overages of that should be kept by the senior center and to help take care of like the stoves, deep fryers, proofing cabinets, et cetera. And so they are asking, so to date, we have not been setting money aside for them. So they are asking at this time for us to revisit that issue.
How much money we talking about?
It would, in some ways, it would be hard to define. And because we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to break it out. We'll have to do a breakout on it because they do serve meals also at the senior center. So we'll have to get some more detail. We might have to set up another expenditures line item and have the jail meals put in one place, the senior meals put in another place so that we can accurately define what that, what that is. But then again, they'll have to split their costs and on our, as far as our bill prep is concerned. So it'll be more work on their part. And we would have to have a working session to see what we are to date.
So that hasn't been done to date?
To date, it's not been done.
That's not been done in any department ever?
I, I don't never remember having a conversation. I remember when we started preparing our own field meals, that I was gonna cut down on the county's input of the.
Paying for the meals. Right. There had been some kind of contingency.
We created their jobs as far as doing our own thing.
I told them I would bring it to your attention and let you discuss it, but I have no frame of reference as far as what had been talked about prior.
Do you have anything in there?
I can go back and look. I mean, they're gonna have to start a contingency line for the stoves and the refrigerators. We're talking thousands of dollars, which we're fixing to get a wall in. So that should take care of that problem. But if, I mean, there should be some type of contingency come back out of that money. I'm not saying take all of it, but there should be some type that goes back in just for that purpose. At the end of the year, if it's not used, then y'all can dedicate wherever you need to.
Or by other revenue producing departments, my recognition might want to keep the revenue from reconcession stand something for yourself.
They get a contingency every year.
They budget that in the contingency.
Yeah. I mean, they get a contingency. I mean, I don't think it would be a substantial amount of money, but you're gonna have to set something aside or expect to take the contingency out for ten.
We don't budget that much.
I think we budget for it. I mean, like cemetery budgets, when they know that they have to have a new tractor or what have you. The same thing for rec. We give them a contingency fund, you know, for things that.
And we've really done it.
And it can be restricted. Y'all can put the restrictions.
Very important here, but we just, those are things that we'll need to discuss.
And it's not separate. The budget's a budget for what we need. And instead of reminding all my employees, it may not be enough.
I mean, you have no idea if the hood goes out. That's twenty-five thousand dollars. Or if the stove goes out, or the, I mean, the deep fryer, small lines is no problem. But you've got big kitchen items. And I'm just thinking ahead, you know, either the contingency comes out of four-ten or twenty, which is fine. Or you could hit in a restricted fund in the senior center budget, having revenue that they are generating.
Well, it's a local government, it's a, it's an expense.
And it goes wherever.
If they need.
If we have it, yeah.
What are your thoughts on how to handle that key?
I'm not sure. I just, I know when we build it, creating a new job and stuff, that was based on part of the jail funds coming back to the senior center expenses.
Give us a breakdown of how much anticipated that might be seeing that will be coming in because as you indicated, you're gonna have to separate it. So that way we have more of a better understanding of how much money we're gonna be looking for. And then that way we can actually, if it needs to go into a capital project fund, then that way it can.
Like you do.
And we can work on, and I can work with Melissa, thanks for having me in meetings. We'll pitch to the director. I can work with her to kind of identify needs. And maybe she can look at like half, an average time or lifespan of her equipment. And then maybe just kind of get some rough clothes so that we would even know what to fit into a capital reserve. We can work on, we can work on that with the budget.
I think you need to know the revenue that's coming in. I don't know that that's ever been done. Now you don't. So if you don't have the line items established, you don't have to give it all. But you, you need to know the revenues that are coming in, do you know?
Lay it, you know, that's what I'm saying. Might not be enough. They might need more. They just need to budget for what they need.
Because we have spent taxpayer dollars to a degree to get that kitchen certified to where we are able to do this type of service. And yeah, we, we do need to know the cost and the revenue, whatever that is.
On our senior side, you know, you have the funding from the HCCBG. So that funding comes down, but we've added lots more seniors since COVID and that number keeps growing. I think they went and visited two more last week. I don't know if they have this week. So I mean, this is stuff you've got to think ahead. It's reality. And our county is made up of more senior citizens, I think now than we have students.
Give us some numbers you can figure out.
Absolutely.
Busy budget.
Yes, busy budget season ahead. We're gonna revisit the art stuff at a later time. And I just wanted to, I know Brad had presented to his request to you at one of the other board meetings, whether it was D S N S or Health Department, I'm not sure. It's not one that I participate in. And but he had brought to your attention about the latch fund that we did not carry over. And I didn't know if you needed more information about that or if you have made a decision about that. What do I need to do with that? So basically, he was given an amendment in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And it was to help with evidence control. And so that's how they hired Todd Torvald. And he was doing like the backlog for their evidence. And so those funds went away at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three because they weren't restricted. So what Brad is asking for is the money that he did not spend that was dedicated towards that evidence portion. He's asking if he can have that back in twenty-three, twenty-four because he thought it was restricted and didn't understand it was not restricted.
So where are those funds, what line item were they allocated now?
And like I said, they went away from between twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. It wasn't restricted till it wasn't carried over. But they had, between the two fiscal years, we've actually paid for evidence control thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Did he pay the amount that he requested? He requested the twenty-five thousand, one eighty.
But his original spend is thirteen thousand, six hundred and ten, I guess, of those funds, stuff he originally requested. So he's wanting to know if he can have the thousands. How much was that original request? Because I did not have.
Twenty-five one eighty.
Twenty-five one eighty?
That is, that thirteen was his?
Sixty.
It was combined in the big latch funds that we gave, that this was just one part. He had three, three different parts. This was one part that was part of it that.
And I wasn't sure which part of it was dedicated to the evidence control. So that's why I wasn't sure. So basically, it would come down to, he's needing the balance, which would be eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. But like I said, that wasn't carried over until this budget year. And so we would have to do a budget amendment. We would have to find that money somewhere and to, to be able to move into the line items that he's requesting as far as that.
Can you ask me just where we would find that? Or is that something you haven't given thought to yet?
Contingency is matched out. We could, or maxed out because we had to use that for the medications for the jail. We still have that much.
We probably have enough in the court's contingency if you want us to live in the hair.
Would you, would you just let us know if that's okay? If there was like, what do you think?
And he's asking for those funds just to complete the project.
Sure, I understand. And when do we leave? And you want to deal with it?
Monday. We'll be having a fatigue Monday, so if you bring it back when you get it up.
No, that is it.
All right. Is there a motion going to call session or G S one forty-three, three eighteen?
One thing about all this, did we ever find anything out about the jails?
Uh, we did have the second. I haven't got the report yet, but they did the second testing, came back with the letter testing. Right off, I think when they did it, they saw it. So I don't have that report in my hands. But once I do that, then we'll have to decide, you'll have to get somebody to tell us how to exit immediately.